Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call a special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order at 7:30 PM August 11th. Could we have the roll please?
Village President Twerpik.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Callum.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the present accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6. An addition notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Can we move on to executive session?
Resolution authorizing executive session at the Office 11, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
The matters to be discussed on executive session are East Orange Water Commission, which is attorney-client privilege, redevelopment negotiations, which is attorney-client privilege, JAC status, which is litigation, and the FMBA and PBA contract negotiations, which are contract negotiation exceptions. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Clark, all in favor. Any opposed saying? Okay, we'll be back at 8 o'clock.
Why just later? You guys pout too much.
No, I don't know why, but I thought you were...
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting the Board of Trustees back to order at eight o'clock. Could we please have the roll?
Village President Corpey.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Galjean present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we have two proclamations to start off this evening. The first is a proclamation supporting the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over statewide crackdown. So I'm just gonna read through this quickly. This is obviously an important topic and there's some good facts here. Sorry, is there a volume problem? I've never been told I talk too quietly. Okay, whereas impaired drivers on our nation's road kill someone every thirty minutes, fifty people per day and almost eighteen thousand people per year. Nineteen percent of motor vehicle fatalities in 2012 were alcohol-related. And whereas an enforcement crackdown is planned to combat impaired driving, whereas the summer season and the Labor Day holiday in particular are traditionally times of social gatherings which include alcohol, and whereas the state of New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety has asked law enforcement agencies throughout the state to participate in the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over 2014 statewide crackdown, whereas the project will involve increased impaired driving enforcement from August fifteenth through September, and whereas an increase in impaired driving enforcement and a reduction in impaired driving will save lives on our roadway, now therefore be it resolved by the Toshmo South Orange Village Board of Trustees that it does declare its support for the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over 2014 statewide crackdown and pledges to increase awareness of the dangers of drinking and driving. So next, really excited to be able to present the next proclamation. I'm gonna turn things over to Trustee Davis Ford in a moment. Instead of reading the whole thing here, what I'm gonna do is just read the last piece and then turn it over to Trustee Davis Ford. So it's resolved that the South Orange Village Board of Trustees hereby expresses its heartfelt congratulations to Lillian Miller on this joyous occasion of her ninety-fifth birthday and offers its sincerest best wishes for happiness and many more birthdays to come. So that's the official statement. I'm gonna turn it over to Trustee Davis Ford to give a little bit of background.
Just to give you a little background, and Ian, her son who's here, would you bring Ms. Miller to the stage? Just to share with you, I hope that she's a role model for a lot of us. She's witty, she's bright, she's lived a wonderful and robust life. She survived a lot of things which I want to share with you, which makes it even more a celebration of her ninety-five years here. But she survived, but she's not a survivor. She's thrived despite the obstacles. She has had, she survived three bouts with breast cancer, survived open heart surgery, survived a double bypass, a partial prolapse, and uterine cancer, but she's full of life and vigor and everything like that. She was originally born in Canada, met her husband there, and had two children, her son Ian and her daughter Sharon. She immigrated to the United States and she worked with the Social Services in New York City, retired to Florida, and joined us here in South Orange about four years ago. I call her Ms. Lily. Her name is Lillian Miller. Loves to party, don't you? Do you have a mic that we can bring to her? Is that possible? Okay, I'm gonna hold it, because I have a mic, first of all. So on behalf...
Check that we're live.
So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we want to present you this resolution. I'll give it to him. And these beautiful flowers. Turn around so people can see you. These beautiful flowers, because you are the most beautiful flower of them all, and we'd like you to say a few words. The good thing about this celebration is Ms. Miller not only knows who she is, where she is, but she so likes to party too. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm completely overcome. Words are failing me. All I can say is, this is one of the happiest moments of my life, and it's just been wonderful going to the JCC, which has fulfilled a good part of my life, because there I learn things and they have an educator there and they have different lectures.
Do you love South Orange? Let's talk about South Orange, you know?
And I love, it's all part of my life, and South Orange is the other part, the other good part. So I gave you the two good parts that fulfill my life and make my years very, very happy.
Thank you.
And I thank you so much.
And I look forward to visiting you again sometime soon and sharing a glass of wine.
And have a very happy birthday. I hear that we are very close to one another in our birthday. Maybe not our age, but I am fifty-nine.
Well, happy birthday to you too.
Thank you very much.
You as well. Thank you. Thank you. So next up on the agenda, we have a resolution that we're gonna move up to the beginning of the meeting. This, like our last proclamation here, this is one of the more exciting things we get to do here. And what we have is a resolution to promote one of our police officers. So I'm gonna ask our clerk to read the resolution by title. We'll take a vote on that and then proceed with swearing in ceremony.
Resolution two twenty-one, resolution appointing Al D'Esso as Lieutenant in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Police Force.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnau.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Now, at this time, I would like to ask the Chief of our Police Department, Jim Shalell, to come up and say a few words before we begin the swearing in.
Jim Shalell. I'd just like to start by thanking the trustees and the village attorney for having the foresight to make this promotion. Al D'Esso has been with the Police Department for sixteen years. He was, first came on the job January twelfth, nineteen ninety-eight. He's the type of individual that I think people here should aspire to. He has a commitment to his job. He's a commitment, he takes pride in his appearance. He comes to work all the time. He has very few sick days in the sixteen years that he's been here. He also, he's got a work ethic that's second to none here. His father, I'd just like to point out that his father, who's gonna hold the Bible for him today, was a captain with the Fire Department and had a long illustrious career with the Fire Department as well. His most recent assignment with the Police Department was in community relations. He worked closely with Janine Buckner with our Neighborhood Watch, and he more or less held everything together. We have an excellent Neighborhood Watch division in our Police Department, and he's one of the reasons why that was successful. One thing I guess I'd like to mention about Al too, I mentioned his physical fitness, he's a mixed martial arts fighter. So that's one thing you can see this kid takes. He will never tell you that, but that's one thing, I've seen him chase after guys who... So what Al's gonna do now, he'll be assigned to the Patrol Division, he'll be on midnights, and it's just, it's great pride for me to bring Al up now with his father and be promoted to rank of Lieutenant. Come on up, Al.
Why don't they stand in front of the podium? Stand in front of the podium. You can take the mic while I hold it.
I appreciate all the youngest ones up here. Raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible. I state my name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Sondly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
In the South Orange Police Department.
The South Orange Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office.
And I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment.
Grant preferential treatment.
Nor seek personal gain.
Nor seek personal gain.
Favor.
Favor.
Or advantage.
Or advantage.
Not available to the public.
Not available to the public.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
I think I can speak for all the trustees to say thank you, not only to Lieutenant D'Esso, but to everybody, not only at our Police Department, but our Fire Department, Rescue Squad, all the folks who we got the chance to celebrate very recently with National Night Out, for doing everything that you do to keep us safe. South Orange would not be what it is today without all the work of all of our police officers that are here today and those that are not here as well. So thank all of you. And the same joke that now we've made a few times before, you all do have to stay for the whole meeting, which should end early around eleven o'clock tonight. So we are gonna move on to the rest of the announcements. For any folks that are interested in sticking around, please feel free, but I would like to give people, if you do want to leave, I can't imagine why, but if you do, you can take a minute or two and just sort of clear out, and then we'll come back here in a couple minutes. Okay. Another party. Yeah. I don't know, texting. Oh, bunnies, I guess.
That's what I meant.
Where do we go now? Do we go on to announcements? All right, so I'm gonna run through some announcements here as folks are clearing out a little bit. The first is, we have a community meeting on water. This is for Monday, September fifteenth. It's gonna be here in this room at SOPAC at seven thirty PM. This is an update on the status of East Orange Water Commission options going forward for the community, and will not only involve a presentation from the village, it will also involve an interactive Q and A portion, so we can make sure to answer any questions that anybody has. That is Monday, September fifteenth, here at seven thirty PM. If you do have any questions about anything that's been going on with the water, please come out to that meeting, so we can make sure to get all your questions answered.
It will be televised.
And that will also be televised, the same way the meetings are tonight. The Community Coalition on Race is looking for potential candidates to serve as trustees for terms starting in January. If you're interested in participating in that, you can visit the CCR's website at two towns dot org, no later than September tenth. Registration at the Baird for cultural arts fall classes have begun. There's a whole bunch of different courses that are being offered, and if you're interested, the classes begin in September. If you're interested, you can visit the Baird dot org to learn a little bit more about that and sign up. There is our eighth annual Free Health Fair. This is Saturday, September sixth, from ten AM to two PM down at the Firehouse downtown. For more information, you can call the Health Department at nine seven three three seven eight seven seven one five, extension seven seven one zero. There'll be blood pressure screenings, hearing screenings, osteoporosis screenings, and a bunch more, as well as some different educational opportunities, and some face painting and other fun stuff for the kids too. Make sure the Piero Gallery has got shows running right now and opening another show in September. If you're interested in learning a little bit more about all the different, everything that's going on at the Piero Gallery, you can find out more actually at the Baird website at the Baird dot org. The South Orange Jewelry and Art Exchange has a new art gallery at sixty-seven South Orange Ave. The art exhibit opened on July seventeenth and will be there through September sixth. The next Container Day is August twenty-third. It's from eight AM to one thirty PM. Make sure you bring down two forms of ID. This is for South Orange residents only. The next Container Day after that is September twenty-seventh. Another reminder about downtown after sundown concerts. It's been some great weather, knock on wood, so far this summer. A lot of great concerts have happened, a lot more to come. Every Friday, every Saturday night, seven thirty PM, down in Spiota Park, down on Sloan Street, live music. Come grab a bite to eat at a restaurant, check out the live music, hang out in the downtown. There's really great stuff going on, a lot of people hanging out. Definitely worth checking out if you haven't. The concerts will be happening, again, every Friday and Saturday until Labor Day. Another reminder about the Farmer's Market. The market is every Wednesday in the parking lot off of Sloan Street and First Street, and that's from two PM to seven PM. And I'm gonna pass this one off to Trustee Cullen for a second, but before I do that, I want to make sure to thank her and the rest of the board and all of our staff and Police Department and all the volunteers who helped contribute to another really incredible year for National Night Out. Trustee Cullen, I don't know if you have any quick thank yous that you'd like to make.
Thanks to everyone.
That covers all the bases. That's amazing. It's the first thank you I've heard where you didn't leave anybody out.
I will add, though, you forgot Movies in the Park. You have to throw it in there, is that they start this Wednesday. It's a showing of E.T., and then on August twentieth, it is Frozen, and then the twenty-seventh is Back to the Future, seven forty-five. It's a continuation of Concerts in the Park, now Movies in the Park, seven forty-five, Floodstone.
That's on Floodstone. Great. Thank you. So next, we can move on to our approval of minutes. We have minutes from the special meeting from July fourteenth, the conference meeting from July fourteenth, and a special meeting from July twenty-ninth. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullen.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay. This discussion item is for the conference agenda. Okay, it's time, before we move on, I would like to open the meeting up for any member of the public who wishes to speak. If you do wish to speak, there is a microphone down there at the middle of the stage. Just come on up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
The microphone is on.
It's on. Just speak.
Good evening, ladies...no, it's not.
It's on, it's just not very loud. You can go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is George Mateus, I live at 219 South Orange Avenue in South Orange, New Jersey. I just would like to name two concerns. Number one is walking of dogs in Grove Park, and unfortunately, they're leaving their waste behind in the park, so it's not a pleasant experience, especially if you step in it. And my other concern is keeping shrubs and trees neatly trimmed. South Orange, please remind all residents that shrubs and trees must be trimmed, so they don't overhang or block sidewalks, especially on corner properties when they could block the view of drivers. Noncompliance could result in a written notice from the chief. It's Village Code 11735C. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because I go around town and I take pictures of many areas. Their hedges are overgrown, their trees are overgrown, and it's a hazard to motorists and pedestrians, and even some kids are touching poison ivy. And it's obstruction, because a lot of the trees are low and overhanging, or they have bushes on one side, or the bushes are from the crosswalk into the gutter, and I don't know if it's the county's responsibility to also come in, or the town, or whoever, but it's like you have obstructions from both sides of the sidewalk, in the pedestrian walkway. So those are my concerns. And also, a third concern is from the corner of Ward Place to Center Street, the whole block of streetlights are out. I notified PSCNG about it a couple of times, so they said that they will try to get to it as soon as possible. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Hey, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yep, just come on up.
My name is Nancy Shetelick, I am an ex-volunteer at JAC. I only have two questions. Number one, at the last meeting I asked if anybody got an ecropsy on Lickety Split. Now I'm also asking if anybody's got an ecropsy on Lucky. Both animals died within three weeks of each other. And the next question is, there is a lot of publicity going out by JAC about all the animals being sent to die at Newark. And I don't know how they got their percentages, because Newark does not release the euthanasia figures, and they're also saying that all the strays that you're sending there are being killed. So I would like to know exactly, since they've been closed in March, how many strays have you sent to them, and do you have any euthanasia figures on that? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, I'll close public comments. The two JAC-related questions, Mr. Lerner, do you have any of that information in front of you tonight?
I, no, we did not get any information on the two animals at the JAC. As far as numbers regarding what we've taken to associate humane, we do have those numbers, I just don't have them in front of me, and I'd be more than happy to give them to you. Just follow up with me, maybe tomorrow.
Okay, great. Next, I'd like to move on to an appointment I'm making to the Public Library Board. I don't know if we have Shayla...oh, we do, oh, great. Okay, so this is 2014-VP10, this is my appointment of Shayla Anastagio as a trustee to the South Orange Public Library Board. So congratulations, the appointment is now done. It's the quickest thing we've ever done. If you'd like to come up, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
Get him on TV.
Thank you, President Torki, for the opportunity to serve on the library board.
Just a little closer to the mic.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the library board. I found the South Orange Public Library extremely welcoming and wonderful, as I have the rest of the town since moving here about three years ago. So thank you, I look forward to serving the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on now to ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2014-15, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of South Orange Village, Section 152-36, Schedule 4, with respect to parking on Rinda Road.
Okay, seeing as this is on for second reading, I'd like to open this up to a public hearing. Does anybody, any members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance in particular? Okay, seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, we'll close the public hearing.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Column?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner, could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance for first reading, 2014-16, introduction and first reading of an ordinance that repeals and amends certain sections of ordinance number 2012-09, to allow for non-residents of South Orange to serve as members for certain classes of membership of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Trustee Schnall, is there anything, I know you've been involved with this a little bit, is there anything that you want to add about where this came from, what it means?
Sure. What this means is actually there is a sitting commissioner on the Historic Preservation Commission, who used to both live and work in the village, and he has served on this committee now for over a year, very well. But, you know, there's a change in his life, and he needed to move out, but he is retaining his business, and it brought up the topic of if he is allowed to still serve on the commission. And indeed, back when the commission was formed, we made a, the trustees made a change to the statute that would not allow that, and actually now reflecting upon it, we realize that it's our recommendation that here's an individual who clearly has a involvement and an influence as a business owner, he's an architect in town, it's not just for him, but the thought is to allow non-residents who have, who fit in Class A and B, which means they have particular knowledge, experience, whether they be as architects or in history, historic preservation, to be on the commission. So that's what this resolution allows for, is to have non-residents to be allowed to participate as commissioners. There's also a, and attorney rather, just to confirm, I believe we also, just to protect ourselves from not having a, over a majority of non-residents, there's a stipulation that no more than, that less than 50% could potentially come from outside of the community.
Yeah, and also that the, only the Class A and B members who have unique experience, either as an architect or in historic preservation, can be non-residents. And then consistent with the statute, there's a provision that says that a majority of the regular members must be residents of South Orange.
Trustee Schnall, quick question. And the HPC, they support this ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, I move the ordinance.
Were there any other questions? Nope, okay. Moved by Trustee Column?
And then I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall, could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 2014-17, introduction and first reading of a bond ordinance authorizing capital improvements to certain sewage facilities in and by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, which would benefit the Township of South Orange Village, a municipality located in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating an aggregate amount of 481,500, therefore and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 481,500 in aggregate principal amount of bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Thank you. Mr. Levinson, is there anything you want to add about that?
These are really mandatory maintenance processes that we're funding for at the joint meeting. There is a resolution further on, where the money is being requested to be funded through the Environmental Trust Fund, which is almost a no-interest loan base.
And just to be clear, this, it's a project that's actually undertaken by the joint meeting, and then the total cost of which they allocate proportionally among the member towns, based on your gallonage, the same way their operating costs are. So we're not actually doing any work, but we have to fund our share of it.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford, could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2014-16 and 2014-17 be scheduled for a second reading and final passage at the September 8th.
Clarification, the second one, 2014-17, has to come after a local finance board hearing, which will not be until mid-September, so that has to be September 22nd.
All right, so, I will revise that statement to say 2014-16 will be scheduled for September the 8th, and Resolution 2014-17 will be for September the...
22nd.
22nd.
Thank you.
Meeting, and a public hearing will be held at those times for the reference ordinance. The village clerk is authorized to take the necessary action to publish public notice for such hearings.
Okay, moved by Trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. So we have our consent agenda next, and before we get to this, I know one of the reasons that some of our audience members are here are to hear our clerk run through all the consent agenda items. This will sadly be the last meeting that we will be doing that. That's fairly standard practice in many governing bodies, is to not read every single consent agenda item. The point of the consent agenda is to sort of consolidate more logistical, administrative, non-major-issue-type resolutions into one. Obviously, the resolutions will still be on the agenda, so any member of the public who's interested in what is to be voted on will be able to see the exact same information ahead of time, before the meeting. We will have the resolutions, any information here that people can view. We'll try and see if there's some way to show people who are watching on TV, the different resolution titles. Not sure if our technology is quite there, but perhaps it is. And we'll obviously be able to speak to any of the resolutions, that anybody might have a question about, the same way that we do now. If any of the trustees have a question about any of them, you know, we'd take that out and vote on it separately. But the point of the consent agenda, as was raised by our clerk's office and administration, was that it's supposed to be kind of the quick process, and one of the meetings where we had 30 or 40 resolutions on there, it really was not too quick at all. So we're gonna do that, I wanted to make sure to give folks notice, and if people have any kind of questions or concerns about that, they can let us know, but the same amount of information about everything that we'll be voting on will be available, the same way it is now before the meeting online. And people can still reach out with any questions, and we can obviously discuss any part of it. So with that being said, I'll turn it over. Better make us one good.
Resolution 222, resolution in support of parallel New Jersey Senate Bill Number S1713 and New Jersey Assembly Bill A366, an act which clarifies the application of the business personal property tax on local exchange telephone companies that were previously subject to tax, amending revised statutes 54:4-1. Resolution 223, resolution hiring seasonal employees in the South Orange Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Resolution 224, resolution awarding contracts to Ryvex Contracting Corp. for Garfield Place and Teichner Avenue intersection improvements. Resolution 225, resolution to adopt the 2015 municipal holiday calendar. Resolutions 226, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation NJSA 48:4-87, 2014 Council on the Arts. Resolution 227, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation NJSA 48:4-87, 2014 Clean Communities. Resolution 228, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation NJSA 40A:4-87, 2014 Alcohol Ed Rehab. Resolution 229, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation NJSA 48:4-87, 2014 Municipal Alliance. Resolution 230, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation NJSA 48:4-87, 2014 DOT Phase 5-1 Bike Path. Resolution 231, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation NJSA 48:4-87, 2013 Municipal Alliance. Resolution 232, resolution awarding contract to Tilcon New York, Inc. for milling, paving, and road improvements on portions of Spear Drive, Overhill Road, and Foster Court, and in the amount not to exceed of 250,000. Resolution 233, resolution affirming the village administrators' hiring of a clerk typist in the tax collector's office in the Department of Administration, Revenue, and Finance. Resolution 234, resolution awarding contract to Denville Line Painting, Inc. for line striping and painting, excuse me, painting of various crosswalks and road surfaces in the amount not to exceed 60,000. Resolution 235, resolution of the Township of South Orange Village and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, making application to the local finance board pursuant to NJSA 58:11B-9, and NJSA 48:2-11, and then NJSA 48:2-26. Resolution 236, resolution authorizing the purchase of two Mark 2015 all-wheel-drive Ford interceptor police vehicles through the state contract, Index T-2776, number 22656. Resolution 237, resolution setting 2014 salaries for non-union and supervisory personnel. Resolution 238, resolution affirming the village administrators' advancement of employees under the OPEIU collective bargaining agreement. Resolution 239, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2015 Ford F-350 regular cab pickup truck for the Department of Public Works through Morris County Co-op, Contract 15C, Item A, from buyer Ford at 170 Ridge Dale Avenue, Morristown, in the amount not to exceed $25,529. Resolution 240, resolution to offer residents Peak Democracy software to better engage residents and stakeholders in South Orange. Resolution 241, resolution approving pre-qualified contractors for village hall renovations.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Okay, any questions, comment, and any consent agenda items?
Yes. Resolution 2014-236, and that's the purchase of the two Ford vehicles for the police officers. My question is, I looked through the attached registration, and so maybe I missed something for, just was interested if there's, in any of these vehicles, hybrid models?
Unfortunately, no, not yet. I've been holding out, hoping that Ford will come through, because they do have hybrid technology, and they do have a Ford Fusion, which is sort of the right size of sedan, but it's not anything that they offer in a police package. They do have some requirements for the police to, basically, they need the room in the trunk, which is often stolen for the battery packs.
Okay.
So, not yet, fingers crossed on Ford, we'll see.
That would be something impossible if it doesn't, you know, affect the ability... That would be something impossible if it doesn't, you know, affect the ability of the police to do the work, since we're a green, so-called, village, that I would hope that as soon as that's possible, and also not cost prohibitive, that we look to buy our future vehicles as some form of hybrid. Okay.
We actually looked at a hybrid a few years ago, being the SUV version, but that still didn't come through. I have a question or statement to make about the same resolution. I had a conversation with Barry Lewis this morning about the statements that I've made in the past about getting information on our policies and practices in acquiring our patrol vehicles. Some of the questions come up, of what is the policy for replacement? How often? What numbers of vehicles do we need for the various functions within the police department? Being patrol, detective, traffic, side job duties? As well as the disposition of vehicles which we no longer need or have been replaced when we do buy new cars. Barry has indicated to me that that's in the works, so I will back away from my objection to the resolution this evening. But this is something that needs to be done in applying management practices within a police department.
Yeah, I was just going to say something about that, Loosser, because it's not just the police cars, by the way, Barry. It's the exact same thing with the staff cars, and we continue to have cars parked in the old Village Hall parking lot, including one with a flat tire that's not been there for three months, which really is time to make, sell that car at auction, do what we want. But we have way too many old cars just sitting around that we're paying insurance on and whatever else, and by selling all those cars off and saving insurance money, it should be enough to pay for one new car.
In addition, freeing up parking space.
This has got to be done, and the same thing with the, and I agree with Howard about the police cars, because we've gone back and forth on this, and the argument's always been that we have to have twelve patrol cars, and so if we buy three every year, the cars last four years, but we don't really look at the cars and see how much they're being used. Turns out, from what I understand, certain cars are favorites, and other cars, which have been there for four years, have far less miles than certain other ones. So we, you know, whether public safety takes it on or not, we have to get that under control on what the real number of cars is that we need.
Understood, and certainly we're in the process of scheduling an auction, and Trustee Levinson brings up obviously very good points, and we're working on that. You know, I've had a number of discussions, I've had discussions with the chief, I did receive information from Captain Echo today to really pin down that part of the response was in the past that they, it was brag, when they would get cars, so they weren't, you know, I'm not making an excuse, I don't know that that is true, but again, I've had a good discussion with the chief and Captain Echo, and we're going to put it in place, and we'll certainly work with Trustee Levinson to develop a policy and clear understanding, both in terms of replacement policy, in terms of which vehicles, how many to need in each different function, what equipment to need in each vehicle, you know, what the sort of progression here, if they come out of control, where they go, and we will certainly develop that pretty expeditions lead, and we'll run it through, I guess, finance to make sure they're on.
Just one other comment, that the amount of money being requested is the cost for the cars under the state contract. We need to add another $10,000 worth of equipment on those cars to make them functional cars within the village. So the cost to the village is about $33,000 per car.
That's correct. This is the, just the cars themselves, there are separate vendors for the lettering, for the light bar, the radios, and things of that nature, and all in, the two cars would be sixty-six, so about $33,000. Would also note, this is the second year in a row that we were able to get all-wheel-drive, which is very helpful. Last year in the winter, the officers, and it avoids us having to buy separate SUVs, so that's good as well.
And as far as the road conditions go, which is something that we've talked a lot about, putting chains on tires does not do the roads any help. So doing all-wheel-drive, you can avoid wrapping your tires with chains and destroying the roads even more than they are already destroyed. That's also a plus. Other questions, comments?
I'd like to speak to 2014-240.
Trustee Schnell, we don't actually have 240 in our packet.
The number or the actual resolution?
The resolution.
What's the problem with it?
I don't have a resolution for it.
But the agenda, it's listed on the agenda.
Barry, that was the one that Trustee Schnell had requested, Peak...
Right, and, and the contract, the, we looked at the contract, I think, I do, I don't know if that's in there.
You need to...
You asked me to put a placeholder, and I did, and...
Yes, if you want to make your, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the comments about this is that it's a software as well as a service. And actually, I, the reason for speaking about this is a couple of them. One, there is some sensitivity. I understand the village about every time we spend any money, and so this is a technology spend, which has been through the Public Marketing and Information Committee, as well as the Finance and IT. And I think in exploring it, it's also something that I feel very strongly and proud about, that I think it's going to be a great help. And the actually origins of this goes back to when myself and Walter and Chino were campaigning, which meant going door-to-door and asking residents how they felt about issues. And I have to say, it was something I didn't really plan for or expect, but it was one of the most involved and engaging time I've ever had in the village, because it's really one-to-one communications, and we asked folks what their issues were, their concerns, would they be willing to participate, had they participated? And sadly, though, since then, there's really not a great deal of opportunities to engage, you know, our residents in such a way, except for these meetings. And to your point, Mr. President, this forum isn't necessarily the most easy and entertaining way to spend, you know, a Monday night for four hours.
Well, it's only entertaining.
It is entertaining. It depends on your perspective. And so what this is, is actually an opportunity to supplement that. And what it is, is essentially it's an open town hall, a virtual town hall, that is conducted online by Internet technologies, and it allows us really to learn from our constituents and hear from them beyond, and there are actually, you know, there are factors that prevent people from coming to these meetings. There is the logistics of having the time, potentially even, you know, traveling and making it here. Some people are afraid of public speaking, so, you know, that's an impediment, and confrontations potentially, the fear of intimidation. So I find that this is an excellent alternative for our residents to get engaged, and again, I think from that campaigning, we found that folks wanted to get involved, they just didn't see a way of doing it. So this is an opportunity to do that. The software and service is called Peak Democracy, and what, one of the things I'd like to do is probably back, not back, going forward in September when we release this, and actually go live, perhaps do a presentation, so we can, you know, share it using electronic means and screens, so folks and residents can see it, and they can understand it. If there are questions, we can invite them to come and ask, and then we'll roll out an initial release of it, and so folks can get engaged. But to me, I think it's a great opportunity to get engaged. It also, you know, candidly, is a great way to get everybody engaged, and oftentimes, there are a few people that do come, and we're thankful for them, but it's not necessarily representative of the full constituency. So I'm eager to hear more from what folks want, and I think this will give us a great opportunity. And also, by the way, and this is my last comment, because it's a full-service vendor, not only are we getting a software platform, but we're getting a company that has done this in over a hundred municipalities around the country, some very large, some even smaller than us, so they're familiar with these, with this type of thing, so they can actually act as consultants. And indeed, one of the concerns when you get a high engagement is potentially could actually encumber our staff. You know, so the good thing about its communications is we hear a lot. The bad news is we could get, you know, caught in a situation where we need to respond. And the beauty of this is a lot of that work can be done and will be done by the company that does Peak Democracy. So everything around technology, all the information technology is done by them, the authentication of our residents, and this, by the way, that's a key important measure, is you can't do this anonymously. That is one of the most important things, and you have to be a resident, you have to have a valid address and your name in order to participate. We require civil communication, so they actually monitor it for non-civil behavior, and will follow up if that's not the case. They answer user questions around passwords and other technology things, and they'll even help in marketing new topics and setting community expectations. So for all those reasons, I think this is something that we're also, that we're all, you know, very fortunate to have. It's going to be great. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to ask.
All right, thank you.
Couple of questions.
Go for it.
Okay. So, a few things that I already expressed to you, Trustee Schnell, is, well, can we first go over the terms, what's supposed to be in that resolution?
Right, it's Peak Democracy Inc. of Delaware Corporation out of Trinidad, California. It is the, it's prorated for the balance of 2014, would be $2,084, and then future years, which are, these are payable out of current-year operating funds, so next year's would be paid out at each successive current fund budget, 2015, 16, and with options to extend all the way through 2018 at $5,000 per year. So those are the basic terms of the agreement.
So it's just a one-year? We would do this year, and then we would have to...
One year, two years, and then two additional optional years.
It's two years.
Okay, so two years.
One and a half years, one and a third, I get, two and a third, right? A third of 2014, the four months of 2014, then 15, 16, and then can extend two additional years. At the negotiated price.
And they don't offer anything less than that? Like a trial period?
So they tier it, but they do it tiered by size of population, and we're in the smallest tier, so it's actually, we get the lowest price.
Okay, so the questions were more the, who gets to pose the question? As I expressed, as a concern, I think we've seen on this board before, that we have very different opinions on some of the issues, and it may not necessarily be that the facts are wrong, but we're sharing different facts. Who actually decides who's going to provide the supplemental information for any question? I would use the example of, probably selling Village Hall was a great example there, where there was really good points, and whether you could say, you know, there's the historic side, that's how we're going to pose and frame the question, or the save-money side, you know, alternative use way to pose the question. Who's actually going to determine which way that goes out, gets pushed to the public?
So that's a perfect example, and it's one that we would have used, the software, if we had it in place, would have been a very good vehicle to learn what the residents want. So first of all, we get the help by the company behind us to help word it, and having done this many times, you want to send it out neutrally. The point of doing it is, we will pick the topics, but the way to position it is, you really want, the reason for doing this isn't to, websites just send out information. So if you really, if you wanted to position something to force the, to a constituency, there are many means of doing it. This is really to do the opposite, is to learn from the constituency. So the question will go out there in a neutral fashion, and it will be, we'll get the wording helped by this company, but the idea is to learn from them. So the topics are chosen by us, and by the way, that's an important thing in terms of setting expectations. Residents cannot choose topics, so it's not a free-for-all. And indeed, one of the purposes of doing this, as I mentioned, is not to encumber staff, but to do the opposite, it's actually to save time. And so it, the trustees and the administration will essentially choose topics. Not everybody can pose topics. There are still, by the way, other means to communicate. This isn't to replace everything, it's not a panacea, it's not to say you can't, I'm not going to, we're not going to remove people's First Amendment rights to talk about stuff. It is a vehicle for this body to govern, to engender, and learn, and also, quite frankly, to be transparent and increase public trust. I think one of the things that is of concern is, you know, in a vacuum, in a lack of information sharing, it's unfortunate, but people will say things that aren't necessarily true, because they don't have the full amount of information. This is a means to be transparent and make sure we get the information out.
I know I missed the last meeting, I don't know, this sounds more like a presentation, and we're voting on a resolution, so why aren't we doing a full presentation first and then a resolution? And we're just done, because it just seems to me that we're going to take, you know, a lot of times, I thought, a lot more questions about this, and I'm just not really sure that this seems kind of big dumb baggage.
That's kind of what I suggested, too. It'd be nice to actually see it. Again, I'm happy, I think, the amount, if we can get that level of value from the residents, is something I would be willing to support, especially since it came from one of our advisory committees. It's the parameters and how this vehicle will operate, what our responsibility is, who they're ultimately accountable to, especially with differing trustees and positions and all that. Those are all the things that I want to flush out, assuming those things are there.
And how many trustees can respond to one?
The trustees were not, perhaps we should ask our attorney to talk about that, but actually, the trustees will not be allowed to participate.
Now, that's one of the, when I was first approached with this, I made it fairly clear that we're not out there having trustees, having communication with other people. There are all sorts of public meetings, public meeting issues, if that were to be the case. But this is a vehicle, as I understand it, to present issues, not from any particular trustee, but to frame public questions that will allow, with background information to support it, of course, and give the public an opportunity to ask further questions and to give their opinions.
I think there's two good examples, just to maybe help sort of wrap our heads around it. One would be, you know, I'd be interested in doing this, for example, with our water situation, and, you know, providing the information to people, and there's options, although they're fairly limited, and ask people what they want to do. The other is, you know, we've all been looped into a bunch of conversations about road conditions and road paving, and this is one of those areas where, you know, I don't personally think there's a, you know, 100% correct amount of money to spend on paving roads every year. I mean, it'd be great to spend enough that every single road was 100% paved all the time, but, you know, there's no way people are going to pay those taxes, I don't think. And so I would be really interested to know where that happening medium is, you know, where are peoples, you know, would people be willing to pay a little bit more to get more roads paved? Do they actually want to pay less for lesser roads paved? Like, you know, that would be really interesting information to know when we're going about, you know, doing our capital budget, and, you know, it's really hard to get that information in a forum like this or through any other means, and this would actually, you know, to some degree allow us to quantify that a little bit. So if we created this place where we could put those kind of questions out there, that we're interested in what people think about it, we can, you know, basically, you're throwing it to residents, and you're not, you know, we're not guiding the discussion, but it's actually being guided by the residents, which is kind of the important part about it. And then, you know, we can look at it and take that into consideration. You know, we come back and make our deliberation, say, well, we put this question out there, you know, 85% of people voted this way, you know, 200 people participated, that seems like pretty solid. Or, you say, okay, well, there were, you know, 6,000 comments on the thread, and, you know, it was split between, you know, these two sides, you know, maybe we need to have like a, you know, a physical town hall meeting to further explore the issue. And so, you know, there's a lot of information that could be gained, you know, from something like this, and for whatever it's worth, from the cost perspective, you know, this is pretty inexpensive compared to some of the other platforms that are out there, especially as Trustee Schnell mentioned, you know, you get, the company is actually very involved in the process, whereas some of these companies, because we have to quote out all the different options, right, some of the companies, they don't do anything, and you're paying more money, and they don't actually do anything. This company is actually less than a lot of the other ones, and they help moderate, they do all these great things to actually make sure the conversations are, you know, sort of constructive.
Steve, what did the Public Marketing Information Committee set forth parameters, saying that if we don't sign up a certain number of people, that we're going to consider the program a failure or a success? Because I would imagine, you know, to Alex's point, if we're looking to get information out there and find out what people feel, I don't know what that magic number is. Obviously, 10 people signing up is a failure, and, you know, 16,000 people is...
Yeah, no, it's a very fair question, and the direct answer is, we have not come up with a specific metric that said whether it's going to be successful or a failure. One of the things, though, that I think will be incremental, as I said, I don't think it's a panacea, but oftentimes, the best thing to do is compare it with what we have today. And in terms of how we get our information, it's very limited. And as I shared earlier, it's not my belief, but actually, I hear a number of our residents say they wish they could have more input and be involved and be engaged. But I guess to answer your question, you know, if it's 10 people, then we'll be very disappointed. I think it's also, you know, incumbent upon us to promote it, to market it, and... That's fair, it's always a good...
I would sort of think that the goal would be created after the sort of project was really implemented.
I just think we really need to have a goal. At one point, the committee has to come back with us and say...
We had a conversation today about specifically how you go about doing that, and in the PIMC committee, it's broken down into... the PIMC committee, it's broken down into a, a number of subcommittees, one of them being a HOW group that will set policies, procedures, or structure on how do you implement a particular one of these products such as this. Part of the question that I had is about how do you get to all the demographics within the village? We need to figure out methodologies such as how do you get to the seniors? How does the senior participate in something which is an online environment? And we talked about being able to have equipment at, at the senior homes, or through the library, have Melissa maybe be able to train people to support people getting on and being able to participate in this. One terminal can have multiple people having a participation in the topic. It's something that we, that we need to put together as a, a structure, which we call, from, from a group called HOW, how do we implement this particular product within the environment?
So the directive of the Public Information Marketing Committee is really to engage in all means, and sometimes people use social media, sometimes they use websites, sometimes they use printed, you know, there is still print out there, and so there's, and seniors are a good example of, of using different vehicles. There are various different neighborhoods, there's geographic distribution, there's email lists, there's a number, and the, the Public Information Committee is considering all of those. Again, this is just another one that provides, I think, a, a great deal of information which will help inform us. And to be really clear, in terms of setting expectations, we, we still, this is not a voting platform. This is, we might be polling and surveying, but it is possible, you know, if the results come back a certain way that favors A over B, that doesn't mean this body needs to only go with A. This is an information gathering tool.
Well, the other important factor, it is a, gives us the ability to mine information. It collects, and we're able to go back and report and mine the information that we receive.
Yeah, I think that's a significant way to think about it, Mr. Rother's point earlier. It's basically, it's not a chatroom model, it is more of a survey and polling model. And the, the difference is that rather than having to comb through responses, we, we get the, we get the responses.
And that it's interactive between the community members.
Right.
Right, I mean, a survey, you're just putting your own opinions down, and I think part of the idea here is that people can actually talk with each other in a way that provides more information to community members, that helps people make more informed opinions about things that are happening. You know, I mean, surveys are great for collecting, you know, information, but on a controversial topic, I'd rather see people have a conversation about it, and, you know, start to, you see if, you know, some sort of, you know, consensus can be built towards, you know, among community members rather than each discrete individual.
And an important element in this is that it will be terribly focused, so that you're going to get responses to what you want. Members of the community cannot start a new, a new line of discussion. That'll be shut down immediately, because you're, you're focused on a particular area, and, and you will get responses to that area. Everything else will be shut down.
Well, maybe one of the things that the Public Information and Marketing Committee could do is also set up a process for taking suggestions on what kind of conversations could get started, and so that if there's a big issue in town, and somehow none of us know about it, which is, you know, probably not gonna happen, but let's say it does, and, you know, that there's some way for them to bring it to our attention and say, hey, you know, everybody in my neighborhood is talking about this, can you, you know, ask this question? And so maybe we could create a process for that too.
The only, the only problem that we always have is that sometimes there are issues that people wanna know about, but we can't discuss.
But we can be transparent about that.
Personality should be a perfect...
You can be transparent about that.
Yes, I know.
And that's important, and Howard was getting at sort of a policies and procedures. It's very important that this body and administration follow through, that after we do one of these surveys, and if there is an action, we need to close the loop, and that's, there is, that is really important. But to be clear, and to piggyback on what Mr. Rother said, this is optimized for the governments and village leaders as a tool, so, so, and that work is being done by this company. So to be clear, it's not just software. If somebody tries to change the topic, they actually comb through, they have intelligent technology as well as human eyes that go through each of the comments, and will not allow a sort of a tangential message. They will actually inform the person, go back to them, and ask them if they would like to re, you know, submit or change it, otherwise their information will not be deleted, it will be moved over. Also, that's the same thing for noncivil communications. Because you're authenticated, it actually, this is gonna be, people have to be very careful what they say, because it will be retained, it's just, but it will be taken out of the standard form, so the, the information will be cogent.
One, we discussed as well, the, is there the capability of spoofing the system by using somebody else's name?
And, yeah, so, so again, I'm, I'm gonna draw an analogy to, it's a real life situation. So virtual is a virtual, or it's a copy in some ways, or a, an attempt to copy what happens in the real world, sometimes you do it better. It can't prevent everything, so you can't stop someone from impersonating, you know, walking in here, going to the microphone and saying, my name is Joe Smith, I live in such and such road. There are ways to do it, and there are tools that this company has, they can check your browser, they can check your IP address. If someone is eminently technically capable, there are ways to anonymize yourself and make yourself anonymous, there are ways. But again, the point is, that's not, this, this does a very adequate job of trying to both enforce and, you know, and be judicious over the use of...
Require a lot more than having like two browsers open on one computer.
Right, exactly.
Who responds to the questions? If the trustees, if it's not two-way, but somebody, I mean, at least what I've noticed, being involved with some of the online message boards, the Nextdoor, doing the neighborhood e-loops, is that once you pose one question, or you pose a statement, it normally leads to a series of additional questions for more information to better understand. I could say it's quite the bear, trying to respond back to all these things, because everybody views issues from a different lens. So you'll get a series of next questions, and I find myself just kind of slammed down sometimes from just trying to get people the information. You may end up in, in a good place at the end, everybody gets it, everybody's on the same page, but it took a long time to get there, and a lot of additional information that we as trustees, through our standing committees, advisory committees, we have briefing packets, we go through all of that. It's not something that I think the average citizen is doing, is reading, you know, our supplemental materials. So how, who's then responsible, when you have somebody who's engaged, who's like, I really like this topic, I wanna learn more, what is X, Y, or Z? Who then compiles that next set of information, or do we just leave it out there? Who, who makes sure that person gets the next set of information that they need?
We can't guarantee, so again, Mr. Rother was absolutely accurate, and it is specifically for the purposes that we are putting it out for that question. If other things get raised, if we get to read it, we cannot participate in that one. If we wanna read it, and we find this, woo, that's a really good question, or that's a topic we should explore, we can then make that an additional topic at a different point. But we are, by, by creating these topics there for a very specific instance, and part of it is expectation setting. So when these things are held, we have to explain to the folks that are using it, here's what you can expect out of it, and what not to expect from it. So by saying certain things, it may not automatically get response. So it is not incumbent, and I think that we have to make sure we set that expectation, that not everybody's question in this particular forum will get an answer. There are other ways to contact us. This doesn't remove my email address, my phone number, and, you know, visiting me at my house.
What was your phone number?
It's not, but, but, but again, yeah.
But that's not to say that if, if the responses that you got would prompt a restatement of the issue, or perhaps provide additional information, that you wouldn't do that subsequently.
Subsequently, correct.
I think there's an opportunity for, you know, the sort of official response, but it's just, it's not an individualized among, you know, but it would be a group as a whole saying, okay, here's the information. And I'll also put out there, you know, I think that, you know, what's so great about this in some ways is that it's a bit of an experiment, and we are trying to find ways to engage people in a way that is productive and helps people understand more about what's happening, not less. And anything that we can do to try and experiment with that, you know, could work out, you know, really, really well for us, because we do have a very engaged community. And like trustee Schnall said, I mean, we see how few people are here tonight, you know, this is not a representation of how many people in this town are paying attention to what's going on. So we gotta find a way to, you know, to talk to them.
I think, if anything, it's, it's hopefully a streamlining process, but we may have to, you know, tinker with that process as well to figure out the best way to streamline it for South Orange specifically. And I can easily see scenarios where we have put out basically a survey-style question, and resident X does bring up an issue that none of us have considered, and it would require us meeting again, saying, oh, hey, resident X brought this up, this should really be part of a restatement on our part, but we would have to have some consensus on our own part first before reissuing such a statement. So I think it would be a process, it would be a new process, there'll be some bumps, but, you know, we'll adjust and tailor to South Orange and work out what we can.
Are there any more questions or comments?
Did you need the, to the point earlier, did you need the vote now to authorize this contract, or?
I think so. Yeah, I think that's, and, and so I'd like to hear that, and, and if it does pass, and we do roll it out, it would most likely be next month, and we would have, I would think this body would like, and would wanna share with our constituents, we can do a full presentation...
I think that we should vote on it, and if you don't want to move forward on it, just vote no.
Yep.
Are there, are there gonna be policies and procedures in place before this gets launched to the public?
That's what Howard was talking about. That's, the, the Public Information Committee has what we call a HOW committee, it's a policies and procedures group. Actually, Mr. Rother sits on it, and, and we have a couple, you know, a trustee as well as some other volunteers who are looking at that. Again, I think to, I think it'll be iterative. I think, you know, we're gonna learn, and they're gonna tell us, but having done this over a hundred times, or I think over a thousand forums, there are some, quote, "best practices" that they would suggest we apply, and to Walter's point, we're maybe a little different, and we'll apply, you know, how we do it, and we'll learn.
Okay.
Okay. Are there questions or comments on any other consent agenda items?
I, I had one question on 2014-222, which is the resolution in support of parallel New Jersey Senate bill, S-1713, and I think this is probably just a Barry question. Do you happen to know, is there a percent or a dollar amount that this would mean for South Orange, and as far as...
There is, but I don't know it. I can certainly send you all an email tomorrow. There, there is a, a value on our, in the, in the tax duplicate.
My understanding that it has the potential to have a huge negative impact for all municipalities.
Yeah, so the specific amount, I don't know, but I can certainly get that for you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion, please.
I move.
Hey, trustee Column moves. Trustee Davis Ford.
No, I said, I said first.
Oh, no, you didn't.
Somebody else?
Davis Ford said first.
Second from trustee...
Can we get videotape on that one? A little replay?
Can we have the, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Column.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have one discussion item on, which was about the Raymond Scotland safety light. There were a bunch of emails that were going around, and it just seemed to be some confusion. I, I thought that we had sort of landed with that we were going to explore every other possible traffic calming, road safety, including enforcement, including engineered solutions, before getting to the point of actually putting the light in. And is that a correct understanding?
Yes, correct.
I, I thought I had sent out an email clarifying that. I don't know if I missed you, or if...
I'm not sure.
But, yeah, I had chased around that bush a little bit, and spoke with Frank, and worked that out, and so, yes, that...
Great.
And the village, we're in the process of installing the speed box, once it finally gets delivered, so they'll be going up.
Great.
Hopefully within the next week.
I think you should also go back to those photos that you would show a couple of years ago, of how the street could look, you know, with the crosswalks and extra trees.
Well, there are crosswalks there now, and I will say, I mean, again, with the, the pedestrian crossing stuff, you know, I am definitely seeing people stop more in town.
Yeah.
Me too.
I don't know how long that will last, hopefully it will last, but the, the Scotland does look a little bit more pedestrian-like.
But I think we need to, I think we need to go back and look at that and see what we have to do to make sure we get all those things done. I think you also talked about putting up more trees.
Yep, 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 yep. Yeah, that's something, we can have that conversation with the county, Frank, you know, I'll, I'll follow up with you, because we had talked about some of the vegetation improvements and things like that.
And the lighting.
I think more trees and lighting would make a huge difference.
And trustee Clark's been working on that.
We really need to get, we really need to finish those up.
So, but those are on your radar, trustee Clark?
Those are on my radar. One of the other items that was on our radar is early yield.
Is what?
Early yield signage, which unfortunately is a separate budget item that South Orange is costing out, can't get done with the normal striping, but, so we're looking at that as well.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up, if there's any member of the public wishing to comment at this time. Okay. I'm seeing as there are no members of the public wishing to comment, to close public comments, and unless there's any new business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this first of two meetings.
I'm a...
I second.
What happened to the bills list?
Bills list?
Uh, I don't know what happened to the bills list.
And to duke it out?
We haven't adjourned yet.
We have not adjourned, that was a very close call there. Okay, trustee Levinson.
Okay, I move the bills list certified by the CFO and previously distributed to the board for their review.
I second.
Okay, moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Schnall. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Column.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Now may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Moved by trustee Column, seconded by trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay.
I'm gonna say goodnight.
All right, the second...
You gotta head out.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
All right. I would like to call our conference agenda meeting to order. Could we please have the roll?
Village president Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Column.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner is leaving. Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner. Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the present accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may be taken, may not be taken. Susan Caljean, village clerk.
Thank you. Thank you. So, my report, I will try and keep brief. This open-ended item, which I'm not going to go too far into, because I'll end up talking for hours about it, but had the opportunity for work to visit Detroit last week, and met with a whole bunch of different organizations, many of which do a lot of sort of urban planning, community building type work. Really fascinating experience to see the ways, just having had the chance to now get to see the ways that different cities approach some of these issues, is unbelievably interesting how they're tackling some of major, major, major problems that the city faces, and to hear about sort of the spirit of folks, a lot of people that have lived in Detroit for a very long time, and see some of the progress, see some of the problems, and getting kind of that overall perspective, not just on some of the unique projects and initiatives of some of the organizations that I got to talk to do, but also generally from the government perspective, where the different areas in the city are improving, and you see the amount that they've invested in, you know, police and public safety services, and just how tremendously that pays off, and how significant it is for, you know, sustaining a more longer-term tax base, that you have the ability to capture people at different stages of their life in a community. So, it's not just young people, or it's not just families, or it's not just senior citizens. All these different groups mixed together, that you provide this entire environment where people can, you know, move in at a younger age, and maybe start renting, then maybe when they're thinking about having a family buy a house, and they feel safe walking around and hanging out, and they send their kids to the schools. Just this kind of cyclical nature of, you know, what services people need when they move to a town, and that actually having a wide range of demographics and ages helps actually spread the burden on municipal services out a little bit, because one age group isn't using all of one type of service. And so, this is very interesting, getting to learn a little bit more about that. And again, I'm going to cut this way short, because I could go on forever about it, and I'm sure, talked to a couple of you already a little bit about it, but it's really, really fascinating to get the chance to go out and learn the way that some other people are working on some of these issues, and, you know, bring back some of those thoughts and ideas here, and also to tell people, you know, about some of the exciting things that we're doing here, which people are always very interested to learn about, to hear good stories about government politics from New Jersey, which are sometimes hard to find. A couple of quick things. One is, in response to some of the questions that we've gotten about road paving and road conditions, Mr. Lewis and I are going to basically put together a sort of consolidated document that explains how this process works. One of the things that, this is one of the areas that we've actually had some success in the process, at the very least, whereas with things like speeding and parking, we kind of are taking them one by one. And I know, trustee Column, you want to make that kind of a more objective process. You know, that is something that our engineering office did do with the roads years ago, and we do, maybe we don't spend enough money. That's the kind of question for us as a policymaking board, but we do have, you know, a fairly objective sort of scientific process, actually. And I think that it's worth explaining that to people, and let them know, you know, throwing out different numbers out there, and kind of letting, you know, people know the background, the context, and just kind of all the different pieces about how we make these decisions, and that even if we can't provide the solution that people want, which ideally would be to pave every single road in perfect condition, at least people understand what's going on, and, you know, we can have an informed discussion about that. So, that's just a little bit of information that I think will be nice when we actually launch the new website, that different areas, like, for example, if someone clicks over to engineering or to Public Works, there might be a link, you know, in departments that are related to an issue like this, explaining, you know, sort of an FAQ of something that always comes up. And people are always asking all of us about where their, you know, road is on the list, what is the list, how does the list get determined? So, let's just, you know, write all that up, put that out there, and let people kind of send that around to each other. Also, we've sent a letter to Essex County. Anybody who's driven on South Orange JAV recently has noticed that PSENG has so kindly involved speed bumps on the road, as they are looking for a gas leak. And so, the road is pretty bumpy. We're not terribly thrilled with the patchwork job that has been done. So, we've, you know, requested the county to also contact PSENG, and see if we can get a little bit better of a job, maybe a larger repaving of the entire sections, or the entire road, that instead of the 25 for 30, you know, bumps that are now in the road currently. So, we did send that to the county, and just seeing what we can do there.
Just a question on that. Did PSENG tell the village in advance, like, how they would fix or attempt to fix it afterward?
There are certain, yeah, there are certain protocols, there are certain, and I believe there are state statutes that require that when you dig up more than a certain amount, you have to install this patch, and if you do more than, I forget what the exact percentage of the road surface, that has to be dug up, it's 20 or 30 percent maybe. And basically, once they surpass that percentage, they have to do a section. I'm not sure if they have surpassed that or not, but.
So, they may not be obligated, so we're just kind of hoping that they will?
Uh, I'm not 100 percent sure if they're obligated.
We're asking for curb to curb, rather than half the road.
Right, because the way, I mean, you could theoretically, if you think about it, even with the percentages, you know, you could have an entire, you know, two lanes of one side of a road interspersed with, like, patchwork that make it impossible to drive on, and, you know, you might not actually hit that percentage, depending on how you calculate it. So, that's a good question, and I think if we need to leverage that to help get this done, we can do that.
Because it is awful, awful driving, you know. If it's a matter of goodwill, if we can, you know, work together to put some pressure on them.
Yeah, and I think that's sort of the step that we're taking now.
I don't know how effective that would be.
Right, right. Well, you know, we'll try that first, and see what happens, but I.
That was a very good letter.
I think we can all agree that the road is not in great condition, and so, whatever we can do there. So, just wanted to give folks an update about that.
Well, the other part of it is, is the visual presentation of the village with a patched-up road.
Also, right, it also looks terrible.
Terrible.
And when we're taking people up, this is, you know, on either side of South Orange JAV, to the hospital with the rescue squad, there's like stuff falling off of shelves, the roads are so bad. And that's really unacceptable, especially, you know, you've got to slow down to actually make it up that road, and that's, you know, emergency vehicles, and everybody. I mean, it's just not particularly safe. So, I'll let people know if you hear anything back from the county or from PSENG. I was going to give a little technology update. I think part of that, we talked about a little bit with Peak Democracy, and I know IT, and if there's any updates from Public Information Marketing, I'll sort of defer to you guys on that. And then, one other thing is an open government ordinance that I'm going to send to you, trustee Davis Ford, for consideration in the legal committee. I had brought it up once or twice before. It's like 99 percent done now, because I've actually been working on it with organization, Citizens Campaign, that helps create sort of model best practice ordinances, and so, and a couple of other organizations. I think it's ready for us to consider, and so, I'm going to shoot that over to you, and for the legal committee to look at. And basically, I've described it a few times before, but this does a couple of different things. One is, it requires the storage of documents in a particular type of format. So, I'm using the word or the phrase "machine readable." Machine readable has different definitions, depending on who you ask, but basically, document storage in a way that can be searched. So, you can, you can bring the text out of it, you could search it, you can archive it, you can index it, all these different things. Basically, it is text, it's not an image, which a lot of scans end up as. So, it does that. It also requires that when residents ask for information, for example, through an Open Public Records Act request, that we basically make best effort at providing them the information in that format, even if that's not what it was stored in. So, instead of having to go back and retroactively change all the documents over, it kind of says, from now forward, this is how we'll store them. And then, when people request an older document, we'll also provide in that information, basically to try and grandfather it in. It also sets some provisions for Oprah requests, some of the things that we had talked about as far as reporting, and how the requests are provided, that they're done in that machine readable format, that they're done as one cohesive document with a table of contents that's easy to understand and follow, instead of, you know, sending 90 files to somebody, you know, each different emails. It sets some provisions for privacy, which I think that we've actually taken a really great step forward in by even just putting a disclaimer in the bottom of our emails that alerts the person who we're communicating with that this is a public conversation. And I have had people email me before and say, please keep this email confidential, and I have no legal authority or ability to do that.
I think that's.
And so, we've done that, and I, and so, that's basically codifying, it's basically codifying a lot of the things that we've actually already done, adding a couple of new things on there, so that any governing bodies in the future are a little bit more, or administrations are a little bit more sort of hands-tied to providing these things in, you know, a more open and actually more cost-effective way for us.
And I want to expedite getting the information to.
It expedites getting the information out, and it saves us money and time. I mean, it's all a bunch of good provisions like that. And the idea would be that, you know, this would become a model sort of open government ordinance for towns throughout New Jersey. So, I'm going to email that over to you. Legal committee can take that into consideration, and hopefully, we can take some steps there. And I think it would be, yeah, really, really great thing for us to do to sort of continue our efforts at making what we do transparent and accessible, and using technology to that end. So, that's everything. Mr. Lewis?
I will try and be brief. Couple of quick updates on the redevelopment front. The gateway is moving along on schedule. They are still anticipating moving tenants in effective September 1. Likely, there'll be a grand opening slash ribbon-cutting ceremony. I'll keep you posted on that, as we don't have another meeting between now and then.
And can you give us a little explanation about the two retail tenants?
I don't know whether that's out for public consumption yet.
One is, because it was reported on.
Okay. Which one?
The bakery.
Okay. Then, well, that is good news. My understanding that they have a lease, I guess it's now public knowledge with a company called Mara's or Mara's. I know them well, because there's one in Denville that's near where I live. I think they have two or three other locations. It's bakery, sandwiches, soups, a lot of good stuff. I know there's another potential tenant. There's some issues we're reviewing as far as the use permit. So, that one, I don't think we're really at liberty to get into. Third and Valley, you've probably seen, the parking deck is going up. That's going up pretty quickly. Goes it up in the precast panels. That's, the parking deck itself, at least structurally, should be done by first or second week in September. They, based on conversation today I had with the principals, as well as the Claremont, they're still on schedule. They're anticipating, looking for temporary COs in November of '15, with people moving in. Village Hall on both fronts, tonight, we took action. We actually approved the pre-qualified contractors, based on the process of regulation we adopted. So, there were six contractors that were pre-qualified. They'll be in a position to bid on the project. At the same time, we also authorized a marketing consultant on the other front, the RFP. Hopefully, be, they're going to have, hopefully, an opportunity to meet with the development committee on Thursday night, and get going. I know they have a pretty aggressive plan to get that out and promoted. On our capital projects roadway, Glenview is continuing, should be finished in a couple of weeks. We did authorize tonight some intersection improvements on Garfield and Tichner. We also authorized milling and paving and road improvements on portions of Spear Overhill and Foster, which should likely be in the next month or two. We previously awarded the curb and sidewalk contract, and had the pre-construction meeting on that. So, that is scheduled to start next week. One of the very first ones will be all that destroyed Bluestone in Spiota, to make sure that gets done before playday. And finally, tonight, we awarded the line striping contract, which will cover almost all of the crosswalks in the entire town, with the, really the only exceptions being roads that are scheduled for additional work or micro paving, and then that line striping will come after the micro paving's done. But, that will certainly, you know, dovetail nicely with the pedestrian safety initiative that's been so successful. And that's all I have. So, I was brief.
You said "was," like somebody else wasn't, or won't be. Anyway, Mr. Rother?
Land it down.
I'll be extremely brief. There's nothing new on the litigation front.
You win. Now, that's brief.
Anybody top that?
Um, all right, trustee Levinson.
And I will be just as brief. Our finance committee meetings have been moved to the first Friday of the month, so we hadn't had a meeting this month.
Okay.
Okay.
There was. Trustee Davis Ford?
We had a meeting earlier today. There were several things that we discussed. I'm going to talk about three of them, and we are finalizing, hopefully, our fee schedule for all things in the village that there are fees that are charged for. We were going to have a wonderful, a new event. South Orange is one of the most engaged communities around, and we have tremendous amount of volunteers who sit on many committees, who commit their time and their expertise. And Sheena, who's part of the legal and personnel and health committee, is going to lead up organizing this annual event where we celebrate our volunteers, and she's going to be working very closely with the clerk's office, with Susan and Chanel, to plan this event. It will be held in September, and details will be forthcoming for those volunteers. And finally, the only, the other thing that I'm going to talk about, so I can keep my comments relatively short, is a wellness initiative for the residents and the employees of South Orange. There already exists, to some extent, some great wellness programs in partnership with St. Barnabas. I met with both our director of health and the chair of our health committee, but also last week with the director, Margie Heller, of patient and community relationships, relations at South Orange. We had been trying to meet for several months, and finally, our schedules, we were able to get together. And basically, we're going to expand on two great programs. One will be held in October, and that is their chef having a activity where you're taught how to cook healthy, good, tasteful food that you can cook easily, you can enjoy, and be able to incorporate this healthy eating lifestyle into your home, or your family, or even as an individual. The, it will be a full meal, and the cost will be nominal. It'll be just $5 to come, learn about how to cook good eating, and then eat the meal that has been prepared healthfully for you.
Do you have to eat the one that you made, because that might be a disgusting center?
No, but, no, it will be prepared by chef.
Oh.
But you'll observe, and then enjoy the meal. And then, the second.
They don't have mac and cheese, Alex.
I don't know about that.
And then, the second initiative that we're going to expand, that has already exists, is that it, there's understanding, if you teach people when they're young, how to read labels and understand what they're eating, how to avoid things that aren't good for you. It's a lifestyle that the majority of people like to keep for most of their life, and the group is targeted at our middle school, fifth grade. And so, we want to expand that program that is already, is a partnership, a program from St. Barnabas, in partnership with the school district, and also with high school students who are, go on a field trip. They go to the supermarket, and they pull items off the shelves, and they have discussions about what's on the label, and what's healthy, and why you should buy this and buy not, and not buy something. So, it'll address obesity, high blood, you know, help prevent high blood. This wellness program is really prevention and encouraging people to adopt healthy ways of living and eating, and also to take responsibility for their wellness. So, you'll be hearing more about these initiatives in the future.
Great, thank you. Trustee Rosner is not here for planning and zoning. Does anyone want to provide an update from the last meeting?
Master plan RFP coming out shortly.
Master plan RFP coming out shortly, she says. All right. I had a couple of issues for trustee Rosner that came up, Mr. Lewis, from our conversations today, and I'll email those over, some code issues that planning and zoning might want to look at. Trustee Column?
Because it's August, I am, I'm, I've agreed not to have too lengthy of a report, but come September.
Watch out!
Bring, like, your donut seat.
To get out by midnight, we will be meeting at 3:30 PM.
Get ready to get comfortable. We will be here a long time. I will say, the latest issue, though, is senior citizen transportation. I'm very excited for that. So, we'll have some things coming to the board shortly on that front. We had a great senior meeting, and we have one coming up, Town Hall, on October 26. So, we'll refer the rest of my report to email.
Great.
And if you get some emails bouncing back.
File size exceeded.
File size limits.
That was a little painful. I think I'm, like, starting to shake.
My spam filter, I don't know. It's been a while. Trustee Clark?
Yes. Public Works, I want to start by reiterating two things. One, that the community meeting on water, September 15, here at Sopac, at 7:30 PM. So, bring your water-related questions. Second thing that you had touched on earlier was the Community Coalition on Race, which is looking for candidates to serve on its Board of Trustees, terms starting in January 2015, and qualifications include your enthusiasm for their mission. So, two towns.org is the place to go for more information on that, if you're interested. Just to touch on a couple of things, the Raway River Flume Cleaning Project is scheduled to, believe I believe it was August 18, it should start, and hopefully, that is just a two-week process, getting it done before school really kicks in. And also, just one often overlooked item at the DPW, you can recycle clothing there. There are goodwill bins at the DPW facility, which can be used for clothing, and shoes as well. I will briefly go into some forestry report numbers from 2013. This is basically just in an effort to make more folks aware of what is going on with our trees, and, let's see. So, just for some perspective, we have roughly 10,500 shade trees within the, within the right of way in South Orange. In 2013, there were 180 removals of trees that were either dangerous or were in significant decline. 750 trees were pruned and elevated. There were 191 stump grindings. There were 75 new plantings of maple oak, zelkova, elm, ash, and sephora, and that is hoped to increase to 100 by the 2015 planting season. And there were 250 inspections of questionable trees during that same time, and only 16 required any kind of crane service. So, also, so everyone knows, that DPW has been working in conjunction with the group that was hired by PSENG to clear trees that are over the, specifically over primary utility lines. Those are, that's a very specific, they've got their turf, they, they're protecting it. So, that is part of PSENG's overall effort to help minimize power outages, especially during these summer storm months. We also have one DPW employee who is studying to become a certified arborist, which will help with all of those efforts, and we are. And we are setting up meetings with a certified tree expert to assist the village in creating a forestry plan and additional services related to tree management going forward. Done.
All right, thank you, Trusty Carter.
That was really lengthy.
A questionable tree. Never heard that.
Yes, so Recreation Cultural Affairs, I also will try to be brief since we spent a lot of time on the Public Information and Marketing Committee and Citizen Engagement. So I'm just going to highlight and focus on the weekend of September 20th and 21st. Starting in the morning is the chief-sponsored 5K up in Newstead and then followed by at noon on Saturday is a combination of the Historical Preservation Commission as well as Baird and a few neighborhoods to sponsor a historic baseball reenactment. And there's actually going to be a team that comes down from Flemington that's going to come up. These guys tour around New Jersey, they play by the rules, the 1864 baseball rules, which means no mitts, that means bare hands. The rules are otherwise fairly similar to what you see in modern day baseball with a couple of little changes. The ball's a little bit different from the hardball we have today, but what we are doing is we're actually going to get a bunch of villagers and we're going to outfit them in sort of old garb, you know, suspenders and old shirts and play against this, this touring team. At the same time, about an hour before the game will start, we'll have some family-oriented games, running bases and we'll invite kids to come down and there'll be a recital of Casey at the Bat, the famous baseball poem. We're hoping actually to have a South Orange celebrity perhaps be the person who's offering his rendition. And a bunch of entertainment, old time foods, hot dogs, peanuts, popcorn, cotton candy kind of stuff. So it promises to be a really fun day.
You're growing a handlebar mustache for that, right?
I'm sorry?
You're growing a handlebar mustache specifically for that event?
I, yes, I started working at this morning, it's...
It'll be ready by next year.
Be many tips, I don't know.
I am not hairsoothed. And then the next day, Sunday, continuing with a big South Orange weekend, is the CRC, the Community Relations Committee sponsors, along with a whole bunch of other organizations, the newcomers slash all comers day and that will be as it was last year at the public library. That will last probably from about 1:00 to 2:30. I expect to see all of you guys there as we share with a lot of our newcomers information and organizations about, about ourselves, but...
Quick question.
Sure.
Do you have a sense of this year as opposed to last year, the year before, do we have more people, new people moving in?
Yeah.
Because we were at a lull for a while.
And so the real estate has picked up, as a matter of fact, at our last meeting, they, we do get a great feed from, I don't know if it comes to the clerk or, we get all, people who are new, newcomers who have a new South Orange address. I'm trying to think where, the real estate guys have, have a way of getting that to us, but to the answer, yes, it's up. So that's the good news for, for real estate is, is there has been more transitions, more, more houses have sold this year than in prior years. So the trend is good there.
And I, and I assume that with the, the gateway coming up and then next year...
Third and Valley.
Third and Valley, hopefully that will be definitely a real, real increase in the attendance in that event or affair.
Absolutely. And so following, also at the same time, from 1:00 to 6 o'clock is South Orange's first play day and it's a little bit, kind of the precedent with South Orange, we celebrate South Orange, CSO. There was a lull for the last couple of years when we tried out kind of a street fair, which some people liked, but it didn't go over as well. So this year, the Village Center Alliance is taking responsibility to put on play day and you should hopefully be seeing a bunch of information via email and various communications as we did with CSO. We're shutting down South Orange Avenue, little pieces of Vos, Village Plaza and part of Sloan Street. There'll be opportunities for kids of all ages to get out and play and have fun and participate, there'll be all sorts of sports, inflatables, so it promises to be a, a great, a great time as well as just a great weekend.
Quite a promise.
Yeah, I'm promising a lot.
Thank you.
Sure.
Unless there is any new business, I'd like to ask, oh, actually before we do that, I have, I have a story. It's about three, no, I'm kidding.
Well, I do, I just...
It's really sad because nobody questioned that.
I have, I have a comment though, a statement.
So we do have a three-hour story?
No, it's really short. It's really short. I'm a woman of my word. I just want to say happy birthday to three great people who celebrated their birthday within the last week or two and that's our clerk, Susan, and that's our trustee Schnall and our president.
And that guy sitting over there.
The hairsooth one.
Happy birthday to you all.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
So before we do adjourn, I just do want to open up for public comments if there is anyone who wishes to speak. Seeing as there's no one who wishes to speak, I'll close public comments and ask for a motion to adjourn. Trusty Davis Ford, seconded by Trusty Schnall, all in favor? Any opposed? Good night.
You got me on that.